And this could be contributed to the ice storm and lack of testing during that time. We've caught up a little bit now, so between February 14th and February 20th, there were only 4,387 tests done, and 2/21 through 2/27, there were 8,843 tests done. So we've caught back up after the power outages and debris that was prevalent throughout our entire county. During that two-week period, we also had a 4.7% positivity rate. We're still under the threshold of 200 per 100,000. That keeps us in the high-risk category. We're at 142.9. In order to drop below to the moderate risk level, we would need to be at 100 cases per 100,000, and that would be 348 cases in a two-week period. The bulk of these cases are coming from central Salem and the northeast Salem-Brooks zip codes for that two-week period. And then for the week of February 25th, Oregon received 200,000 doses of the Pfizer vaccine and about 210 doses of the Moderna vaccine, and this week, we're receiving 34,000 Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. Marion County will be receiving approximately 7,300 doses this week. Oregon Health Authority may allocate more based on supply and availability, but we anticipate that we'll get at least the 7,300 doses here in Marion County. 5,000 should be going to Salem Health at the Oregon Fairgrounds, and then another 1,700 to Marion County Health and Human Services, along with the 600 Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. We're really prioritizing those high incident rate areas for vaccine distribution. So over the previous two-week period, you heard me say that central Salem, northeast Salem, Brooks zip codes were where the bulk of the cases were coming from. And so yesterday during the vaccine prioritization discussion, we talked about prioritizing the 97305 zip code for some vaccine points of distribution, and our team is working on a plan to host some clinics out in that area. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is a single-dose vaccine, and supplies are limited still. We do anticipate the allocation of Johnson &amp; Johnson to be a little inconsistent in the beginning and then even out as we move into the spring months. It is a weakened live virus. No, excuse me. Weakened live vac... Sorry. It's an experimental viral vector vaccine that uses the weakened live pathogen as the delivery method. So it is different from the mRNA vaccine. So people have a somewhat of a choice if they're willing, if they would like the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, then you might need to wait a little bit longer until supplies become more readily available. It is between 66% and 72% effective at preventing moderate to severe disease from COVID-19 and 85% effective at preventing severe disease. And then almost 1 million Oregonians have taken either their first or second dose, and we think, and about 65,000 doses have been administered in Marion County. We think that somewhere between 50,000 and 60,000 of these folks are Marion County residents. These are, our healthcare providers report to us on a daily basis how many vaccines they've administered. We don't necessarily have what county of residence these folks are in, so we're taking a little percentage of the total doses that have been administered here, and also comparing to the Oregon Health Authority's website on how many doses have been administered in Marion County. And then, starting no later than March 29th, Governor Brown announced that adults 45 to 64 with underlying medical conditions will be eligible for the vaccine, along with migrant farm workers, seafood agricultural workers, people living in low-income senior housing, senior congregate and independent living, those experiencing homelessness, and people displaced from wildfires and wildland firefighters will be eligible. And then we hope that by July 1st, all Oregonians over the age of 16 will be eligible for the One question that we have been receiving is how and where do I get my second dose? In most cases, you'll receive your second dose at the same place that you received your first dose. Different healthcare providers may schedule you differently. So if you received your first dose, for example, at the Woodburn Ambulance Clinic, you may need to reach out to the same person that you scheduled your first dose with to schedule your second dose. And the second doses arrive inconsistently, and so you may need to wait until that third or fourth week to schedule your second dose, just because we need to be sure that we have doses on hand for you. Some clinics schedule when you receive the first dose, so they might schedule you to come back at a later date right then and there. And then if you're not sure, just please make sure to ask while you're there getting your first dose on how you're going to get your second one. And then this past Sunday marked the year anniversary for the pandemic in Oregon, and we've certainly all been impacted in one way or another with, people may have lost their job or lost loved ones, and just want to thank everyone who's worked on this COVID response, taken the precautions, wearing a mask, washing their hands, social distancing, and doing the hard work to keep their friends and family in our community safe. So we're, we see a little light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccine, and we're just going as hard as we can to get those doses out the door, so thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Comments? Questions? No? Thank you. I just want to encourage people, it's so good to see our restaurants get open this weekend, and hopefully breathing a little air into their survival, and some have not made it. And I just want to encourage people to continue to be safe when they're out there in the public. I know that we all, yesterday, had a big discussion on making sure that we're trying to get these vaccines into the places where we really see outbreaks, and we just want to thank you and the Health Department and Ryan for, again, all those, as Commissioner Willis said yesterday, all those superstars that were on the, is that what you said? All-stars?
All-stars.
All the all-stars that were on the phone, giving us the statistics and cranking out the numbers, and just want to, again, every day, be thankful for you and your team, what you've done during this year anniversary that we're celebrating this week. Yeah. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a consent calendar.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the consent calendar. Agenda on it, in it, under Board of Commissioners, OLCC applications, recommend approval of Antique Power Land Museum Association Incorporated, DBE Power Land Heritage Park in Salem, Oregon, and Vita Springs Vineyard, LLC, DBA Vita Springs in Salem, Oregon, approve an order recommending renewal of the Oregon Literate Control Commission licenses for these businesses. Under Health and Human Services, approve an order reappointing Sean Baird, Mark Orkland?
Yorclund.
Yorclund, and Lauren Hall, I apologize, to the Marion County Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee, with terms ending January 31st, 2024. And approve Amendment Number Two to the Purchase Order Contract with Robert Half International Incorporated, to add $75,000 for a new contract total of $262,000 for temporary account staffing to track COVID-19 funding, and extend the term date to June 30th, 2021. Under Public Works, receive notice of hearing Officer's decision denying amendment, denying adjustment, excuse me, case number 20-006/Mendoza and Wrangle. And under Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $22,943.56 to amazon.com, account number 346785.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, and I believe Commissioner, you just had a question.
Yeah, I wanted to hear Ryan, since he's here, since he had the bad sense to be here, so I could bring him up and ask him a question. I just wanted to ask about this temporary staffing with Robert Half. How's it going? I know, I know that we had sort of a crunch, we hired all these new people, there was all this new bookkeeping we had to do. How's that been going? Are we working through it? I just, just hoping to get an update, that's all.
Sure, yeah, I can give an update. And for the record, my name's Ryan Matthews, the Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services Department. So yeah, that was something we engaged in pretty early on in our COVID response, was we identified that we just did not have the administrative resources to be able to provide enough support to, for the numerous funding sources that we were, that we were receiving, and the expenditures, and the volume of tracking, and, and really the details, that we needed to have somebody that really was solely focused on that. So the person who, that we've been contracting with Robert Half, they attend our DOC, so they represent, they're the finance chief, equivalent for our emergency operations center within the department. They track all COVID expenditures, monitor those, they verify that the list of people that we say are working in our emergency response are coding their time appropriately on the timesheets. So they're taking care of a lot of the details, and they review every transaction that is coded with the COVID project code to make sure that was done appropriately, and then help us identify which of our COVID funding sources is the appropriate, it would be appropriate to bill that against. So I think it's really gone really well. I think that we've been slowly filling some vacant positions in our Administrative Services Division, so I think there is a hope that this is winding down, you know, to this point. And I think that we're, we're looking at the next, probably to get through this fiscal year, and then we would most likely not need this individual anymore. But I think they're really going to be critical for us to make sure that we are spending all the funds appropriately, making sure that we have everything documented. This is somebody who has experiences, gone through FEMA reimbursements and things where for emergency disaster recovery in the past, so they bring that expertise, which is not something, you know, we're getting adept at that in Marion County, but it's not something traditionally that we've had that skill set. So I think it's been a really valuable resource, and I know our DOC really appreciates having somebody there on all the calls, providing updates on expenditures, and where people should be coding their time, and which pot of funding has, has run out, and where they should be diverting new expenditures, and those kinds of things. I think it's been really helpful.
I see Katrina nodding vigorously behind you. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar?
I just want to say that I'm thrilled to see Battalion Chief Yorclund here from Marion County Fire.
Commissioner, what I was going to do after we pass this, if we pass this, I would like to request unanimous consent to go back to public comment and have the chief just come up and introduce himself.
Okay.
We're good?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we can dialogue. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. So Chair requests unanimous consent that we go back to public comment and allow Battalion Chief to come up and say hello.
Works for me.
Have a little dialogue. Welcome. Thanks for being here this morning.
Good morning. Thanks, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Just for the record, just to introduce yourself.
For the record, my name is Mark Yorclund, Battalion Chief, Marion County Fire, and also VMS Chief. I'm looking forward to this, another three-year appointment on the Ambulance Service Committee. I think we've come a long ways, dealing with some issues that I know the previous Commissioners had problems with, hospitals and turnarounds that we've really dealt with. I'm happy to say we have not seen a lot of those issues, even with the pandemic, and I think we've come a long way. And I just really want to thank you for this opportunity to continue for another three years, and hope it goes as smooth.
So I've worked with Mark, and I have to say that he would be an asset to any team. And I really don't know what those issues previously were, but I find great comfort in the fact that you're providing any advisory information to any level of healthcare in Marion County. He is by far one of the most integrity-filled individuals, not to mention the fact that he's really, really good at his job. And I only had the privilege of working with him for about four years, but I learned a lot about Marion County, and the way things should be done, customer service, and I watched him save a lot of lives. So thank you for making this additional commitment. It's, it's really great.
I look forward to it.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. I did a ride-along in Marion County, one out on Corden Road with, what is it, Captain Doden, I think.
Yes, yes. He's one of my captains, yes.
Say hello to them.
I shall do that. Appreciate all your help and support.
Thanks for your service.
Thanks for letting us put you on the spot.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just say, the board that he, we appointed him to does the ambulance service districts, and who's going to, which ambulance service is going to go where throughout? And we've had some really good times, and, you know, since I've been here. It is, at times when you go to redo those districts, it becomes a little bit of a challenge. Having, having good people who are putting the citizens first when they make those decisions on that board is great, so it's great to have you on there, Mark.
This is an area that we haven't had a lot of decision-making on, which I always think of as like a sign that it's really working well.
Kind of a sign out of mind is always a good thing to say.
Yeah. Yeah. We've only had three big emergencies we've had to deal with, so keep going the way you're going. Yeah. I think Commissioner Brintano had actually served as the chair from our, during the interim, so next time you have lunch with him, ask him about the ambulance service district.
I will.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With permission, we'll go back to our action items. Consider, first action items, consider entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Detroit and the city of Gates, provide community development block grant support wildfire recovery program services. And this has been, we all know this is a big issue, so Lisa, welcome. Glad that we're getting to this point.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lisa Trowarnik, Senior Policy Analyst in the Board of Commissioners office, and I-
Could you pull the microphone a little closer?
I'm going to get closer. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'm here today to talk about the, an intergovernmental agreement that we're requesting with the cities of Gates and Detroit, two separate agreements, one for each city. And this is to support our Santiam Canyon wildfire recovery program. As you know, for the last couple of months, staff has been working on developing this program. We've reached out to the state through Business Oregon for community development block grant funds, and part of the requirement to get those funds is that we have an intergovernmental agreement with the cities that are going to benefit from that, from those funds. And while the whole Santiam Canyon should benefit from our fire recovery program, these funds specifically are designated for direct supports to the cities of Gates and Detroit, and so those are the only two cities that we need the agreements with. We've talked with the cities, they're on board with what we're doing, they're excited about what we're doing, and this is just the final step in being able to complete our application for those funds.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions?
Uh, no. I'm over the moon that you're here.
So Lisa, we, we have not had the cities sign these agreements yet, right? I think Jan, we talked yesterday, they're trying to get them on their agendas this week?
Correct. The cities have them also, and so they're working on their ends, and so we're kind of doing this parallel, so we can get that application in as soon as possible.
Yeah, and I know in our application, we said that this was being, we were developing this, and we were going to have this in our application, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Take a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Detroit and the city of Gates to provide community development block grant-supported wildfire recovery program services.
Start with the motion.
Yeah, motion, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item under Public Works. Thanks, Lisa. Thanks for your work on this. Public Works, consider approval of incoming funds, intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, known as ODOT, for Delaney Road, Battle Creek Bridge Project estimated at $685,000, which ODOT will provide $614,650 and the 50 cents in federal funding with the remaining estimate of $70,349 and the 50 cents to be funded by the county. And as always, I get to have a slideshow this morning because Ryan's here.
It's your favorite time.
So for the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Capital Projects Manager. Here with Steve Pressler, Marion County Project Engineer. This project's located just west of the city of Turner and south of the city of Salem. It's at the intersection of Delaney Road and Battle Creek Road, and you can see right here is where the project will, will occur. So I'll turn it over to Steve and let him talk a little about the existing structure and what our plans are for this project.
Okay. Steve Pressler, Public Works. I have two photos up here. One is the existing structure. It's an old timber structure. We've got a lot of these. They, they require a lot of maintenance, but this particular structure is in relatively good condition. Bridge crew keeps it up fairly well. It's a fairly well-used route with a lot of truck traffic. You can see from the picture below, it's on a terrible alignment with Delaney and Battle Creek. It's kind of a confusing intersection. We get a lot of trap, traffic collisions, runoff road accidents, things of that nature at this intersection. And just looking at this, you can see it's kind of confusing when you come up to this intersection as to who has the, the through movement and who should be taking the lead there. This bridge, while it's not a great bridge, it has a fairly high sufficiency rating, so it wouldn't qualify for local bridge program funds. Luckily, we have a, a good reason with Delaney Road being in the SCATs boundary to fix this intersection, make Delaney a more through route, and get the bridge replaced. So the plan is to realign Delaney Road, so it's pretty clear that it's the through movement in that area, and then squaring up the intersections of Battle Creek and Parish Gap, kind of as You can see there's going to be some impacts to some adjacent properties. We're going to try to minimize that with some wall and the location of the bridge. Next slide.
One thing I would like to point out here, this is a preliminary layout. We will do outreach, talk to residents, look at the layout before we finalize plans, so we're just at the very beginning of this process, and we will do an extensive design and really finalize this before, before the alignments are set in stone. Okay? So the new-
Can I just ask a process question? So when you say you're reaching out to residents, we know this is a very rural intersection outside of, you know, a couple of towns, so how far will you go out and, and what is that process?
So we typically, so on something like this, where we're going to directly impact properties, we'll reach out to all of those residents directly and make sure that we're talking with them and having individual conversations, but we will also do public meetings. This last year's been a little tougher with, with all the restrictions, but typically, we put signs out at the intersection saying we're going to have a public meeting, what day it is, where it's at. We post it on our website. We also send letters, and we really look at, at each project to decide how far away we're going to send letters. If you're in town, typically we'll keep it within, say, 500 feet, or else we'll get into the, we'll, we'll send a lot of letters if we, we go out too much further. But on a rural project like this, we may go out a little further, and, and because it's not that many properties, we can, we can notify more people directly. But we do also post publicly that we're going to have, have these meetings and, and let people know about the project. We also have a website where we have all of our projects listed, so that people can go on and see the progress of all of our projects and where we are, and we try to keep that updated, so they can, can get information without directly talking to us as well.
And maybe this, maybe this question's coming, I'll hold it, but right-of-way, are you going to talk about what right-of-way we need to get, et cetera, in this area?
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can talk about that.
Yeah.
It may be go back to the last slide. If you look at this, you can see where the outer line kind of crosses property boundaries outside of the right-of-way. It's tough to do anything good within the existing right-of-way because it's centered on those existing road alignments. And so to get the intersections teed up like they should be for safety, and to make Delaney the through movement, we are impacting some adjacent properties, and you can see about, about eight of them.
So just, so it's, it's up here, so this is Battle Creek, right, coming in?
Yes.
Right. And then right-of-way over here on Delaney, you get it down south?
Right. And we go through a process through ODOT for the right-of-way, paying fair market value, going through appraisals, and then negotiations with the property owners. They can bring up items that they think we missed when we get into that process, and we have an exchange with them to-
Thanks, Steve. Commissioner.
So is this a forced process on the property owner? Like, they don't have an option to say, you're not taking my property? I mean, is it farmed land?
It's, uh, we, it is a, a process that we have to commit to obtaining the right-of-way, but we work with the property owners. We, we really look for how we can do it with the least impact possible. But we will be bringing, because this is a federally funded project, we will bring an agreement later in the project that says that we are committing to obtaining the right-of-way to complete the project.
So I think a follow-up to that, have these landowners been contacted yet in this part of the project?
I know that one has reached out to us and, and expressed a concern about where their well is located, so we're, we're already looking at that, and may shift this alignment a little bit due to that, and, and I believe that's down, further down Delaney, maybe.
So they have been contacted? They know about the process and where we're at, that's all?
Uh, they have, but it, it's been a while, and, and it hasn't been as formal. We're just starting this, so we'll, we'll reach out here shortly again.
If you want to hear from someone.
I mean, I imagine so. I guess I just, I don't really fully understand the process. So you, the government decides that this is what they're going to do before they talk to the landowners, and then hope that the landowners say yes, and if not, you just go and assume their land with fair market value prices?
So Commissioner, the process is entered statute, under one of our ORSs, it's called eminent domain. And what will happen is, we actually signed an agreement with ODOT. In order to get these funds, Public Works needs to reach out to landowners with fair market value, and they get appraisals. If the landowners say, no, I don't want to buy, then Public Works will come back to the board, and they will say, we need to build this bridge, it's for a public purpose, and you will have a hearing and decide if this is for a public purpose. If you do that, then it will be under eminent domain, and the landowners can then, under the statute, dispute the amount that they're being paid. And so it is a process.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to clarify something. So we have to tell ODOT, though, that we're willing to go through that process upfront. And so I guess my question, because this happened before, and I got the answer, and I've forgotten it. So let's say, we say to ODOT, yes, we're committed to getting this land, even if that means using eminent domain. But then let's say we start getting feedback from folks that say, hey, you know, we don't like this. As the Board of Commissioners, we decide, we're not actually willing to, to force these people to sell us their land. Is the, is the hook that we just have to give the money back? Is that, what's the, what are the consequences?
Yeah, we would have to give the money back. Any money we'd spent on preliminary engineering or right-of-way, we'd have to, to give back to ODOT.
Okay. But it wouldn't go beyond that.
I'd have to look at the contract, actually.
Yeah.
Because I do think, this is something that came up before, that, and it's never been a problem, but I, it is something where it's like, wait, the, the timing thing is at issue, right? Where we say to ODOT, yes, we're willing to do this, and then we go to the landowners and say, hey, we told ODOT we were willing to do this, do you guys want to help us do this? And so far, everybody's been great, and all of our projects, we haven't had an issue, you know? Where we have had an issue, you guys are able to negotiate it. But there is this sort of hypothetical, like, well, hypothetically, what if there was one landowner who was like, no, and hell no? And then we get stuck in this situation where we could potentially be at risk. So I, I'm, I don't know if there's a solution to that, because I know to get the money to do the project, you have to commit to ODOT, but it's just something that I think we should look into.
So we went through this process with Silverton Bridge, for example, and I know there was one property owner that, we go back and back, but we finally got through it. And I know since I've been here, we haven't had to do, we haven't had to take it. So we're more than fair, and I think the process, you'll see how that process unfolds, and, you know, I know this intersection, I used to live over the hill from here, and this is a really bad intersection, as we saw, the bridge is really old. We need to make some, some improvements out there. And I think I also heard Steve say that you've already, or Ryan said it, you've already adjusted something because of some feedback you got from one citizen that lives in the area. So that's what they'll try to do, is, is adjust the model. This isn't the final, like you said, not the final plan. So I, I think we got off on a really good discussion on a lot of things. Did you have some other, more of your presentation that we?
We do. There's only one other thing I wanted to mention, which is when we get this grant, that is public as well. So that, that gets posted. We got it through, as Steve said, SCATs. So that gets posted. We got it through, as Steve said, SCATS. And all of that is a public process.
On that last slide, a quick point out that one thing we did talk to those, the property owner there at Parish Gap, you can see their parcel is a little tight. And we are planning on putting a wall there to limit the impact to that property. And then some additional walls around the bridge and such. So, and that can expand. Sometimes you look at it and you say, okay, cost-wise, it would be wise to just do a fill. But if you're impacting a property, you'll adjust that so that you don't have as much of an impact on that property. And then this is, gives you an idea of kind of what we're looking at for the road. It's going to be wider through that area, going to widen out to the approach roadway, the approach roadway leading up to the bridge. And then they'll have nice wide shoulders of eight feet across the bridge. That's the current standard for a road of this 80T speed and type. So people have a safe crossing through that area and it will be clear that Delaney is the through movement. I don't know, those of you familiar with this area, there is a lot of truck traffic coming out of Turner, going through this area. So it's a fairly heavily used route. And it is important to the city of Turner. They really advocated for this project with SCATS.
All right, so we have our project budget and schedule here. Currently, we're only funded through preliminary engineering and right-of-way acquisition. Construction funding is expected to be awarded in the next, what we call, step or State Transportation Improvement Plan cycle. And so the federal share of the PE and right-of-way is $614,650.50. Our county share is $70,849.50. That's 10.27% of the total. So the total project estimate for those two phases are $685,500. The preliminary schedule includes preliminary design, starting in 2021, assuming you approve this agreement. Right-of-way occurring in 2023 and construction occurring in 2025. So we do have quite a bit of time for design and right-of-way. And with that, I'd ask if you have any questions?
Commissioner?
No, I mean, I can follow up. I have lots of questions.
Okay, we're good. Take a motion.
My turn? Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation. For the Delaney Road Battle Creek Bridge project estimated at $685,000, which ODOT will provide, $614,650.50 in federal funding, with the remaining estimate of $70,349.50 to be funded by the county.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. And I just want to clarify, under discussion, this isn't a lot of money. So is this just the bridge improvements? Or you do this whole interchange for...
So this, this is just design and purchasing of the right-of-way. We do have an estimate. It's, we estimate it will cost, construction will cost approximately $3.9 million. That will be funded at a later date.
Yep, got it. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. And I think we're still here, consider approval of a public improvement agreement with Legacy Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $1,390,678.75 for Phase Three of the Marion County Ferry Boat Program through September 30th, 2023. Welcome again.
Thank you. Again, Steve and I will be presenting on this project. We are talking about two locations, our Wheatland and Buena Vista Ferry. The Wheatland Ferry, for those that don't know, is located north of the city of Kaiser and crosses the Willamette River. The Buena Vista Ferry is south of the city of Independence. And again, because Steve is the engineer of record on this project, I'll turn it over to him to talk a little bit about the project's scope.
I thought, I was thinking about this this morning and I wished I would have put some pictures in this slide because the pictures give you some good action shots out there. But right where the gray area is, that's the ramps down to the water. And if you've been out there, you know the Wheatland particularly gets a fair amount of use and it's pretty important to the area. For this project, we're going to bring in generators to both ferries. And that's kind of important. It's, this is in a rural area and lots of times they'll go, power will go out. And that creates quite a problem if you have a group of people out in the middle of the river. So we're going to construct a generator. You can see off to the left, we're constructing a platform. That's in the floodplain, so it has to be elevated. And then we'll install the generator on that. And it'll automatically kick in when the power goes out so that the ferry can continue operations. And that would be good also in an emergency like during the ice storm or, you know, hopefully not, but the earthquake, we'd still have power there and we could still operate the ferry. And if, say, a bridge collapses, this could be an alternative route. So it's been something we've been wanting to do to get backup power and this will accomplish that. Another thing that we're going to do is resurface the ramps. They've been used and abused for quite a while now and there's rebar showing. So we're going to fix all that up and put a high-performance concrete overlay on both ramps. And then we're going to widen to one side to give a work area for the operations staff and improve some safety there. Currently, there's these single-pile dolphins off to the side. You can see down, down in the lower part, that lower area. Those are where the existing dolphins are. We're going to replace those. They're inadequate for the current ferry and we'll build some new dolphins to current standards for impact and, yes?
What's a dolphin? I assume you don't mean me.
Sorry. I get into jargon and I forget, I'm using it.
Never seen him.
It's a, it's a, consider it a tie-off.
Stabilizing block, right, that they connect to so it doesn't float down the river?
Yeah, yeah, it's a tie-off. You see them around ports and what have you.
Right, perfect.
So these will be oriented so the ferry can come in up the river, tie off to those and just hang out. We have four of them because the river is very variable. So during really high-flow events, we might be out at the fourth dolphin tied off. Like 96 could be way out there. So to give the ferry a place to tie off during high-water flow when we can't operate, we need a series of dolphins to use based on the water level. And one last thing on that one. We are adding some impervious areas. So ODOT is requiring us to do some swale there to treat the stormwater. So that's the last piece of the Wheatland.
Wait, what is that? What is that? Tell me what that looks like.
It looks like...
This is like my neighbor. I want to see what it looks like.
It looks like a ditch with some special plants in it.
Okay, cool. Less gravel.
Yeah. So then Buena Vista, the work there is limited to the backup generator. So both ferries will have a backup generator. This ferry is important. Even though it doesn't get used much, it's important to the local farmers in the community of Buena Vista. And so we'll construct a platform to raise it above the 100-year floodplain and install the generator so there, too, will have the backup power.
So, and one thing to note, we are purchasing the generators through a separate contract. So this is just for installation of the generators that have been purchased.
Steve, you said that Buena Vista is important. It's also important for Beaver fans because it's the quickest and most beautiful way to drive from South Salem to Corvallis. If you haven't done it, it's a really beautiful drive.
Stop telling people the shortcut. It's disgusting.
And it's, I love, I love when I had out-of-town guests because I lived out south for over 20 years. And my aunt or my uncle, and we'd go down to a game and I'd take them across the ferry and they just would go, "Oh, my gosh, this is beautiful. This is so cool. Where do you get to do that?" So, okay, it's a secret.
I know.
We need the revenue. Go down there, right?
Not a secret anymore.
There's no foot, you can't go to a football game, so...
That ferry definitely needs the revenue, so it's good to bring that up.
If I had the ideal job in, you know, if I wasn't doing this, I would love to be that ferry operator, especially in the summertime when birds are flying.
It's a stiff hiring process. I don't know if you'd make it.
Oh, I don't think so. Yeah. Okay, where were we? Here.
All right, so we're here today talking about the construction contract for this project. We received five bids. The low bid was Legacy Contracting at $1,390,678.75. Again, this is a federally funded project. It's through a separate program than the last project we talked about. So the funding ratio on this one is federal funds cover 80% of the project. County funds cover 20%. So the county portion of the project's $278,135.75. Assuming we approve this contract today, the construction schedule is to have construction occur between May of 2021 and September of 2021.
I have a question. Go ahead. Do you have a question? Polk County, in share, are they chipping in? Or Yamhill County?
They share in the operations, as I understand it, as far as cost.
Yeah, I know that.
There's no agreement with them as, that I, for sharing the cost of improvements.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we pretty much fund these ferries. And Buena Vista, I know we get a lot of federal help on it, but Polk County...
Yeah, it's interesting. Actually, I didn't know that and I'm curious why they don't. They really benefit from it.
If you really think about it, Yamhill County is the big, what do we do, 1,000? We're averaging 1,000 cars a day. We were averaging 1,000 cars.
Yeah, it's a lot of use.
Are we still doing 1,000?
I don't know about the current numbers, but I know it, starting in the spring and summer, if you go there, there's quite a weight.
Yeah.
Do you think he was studying your loss, Commissioner?
No, I'm just going to see Commissioner Pope and Casey the next time I talk to him. Send them a little bit of this love.
I think that's great. I think we should go on a tour with Commissioner Bershauer, who's brand-new in Yamhill County, and show her what it looks like.
And what we pay for.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Anything else?
Nothing else without, yeah.
Take a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the public improvement agreement with Legacy Contracting, Inc. in the amount of $1,390,678.75 for Phase Three of the Marion County Ferry Boat Program through September 30th, 2023.
I second the motion.
Yeah, motion and second. Any further discussion?
I have one question in regards to the county funds, that 20%. Does any portion of the ferry fees go into that county fund bucket? Or is this all like road tax?
That is a really good question that I am sorry, I don't have the answer for.
Of course, Brian Nicholas.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know that, and again, Brian can answer that question in detail, but there are road funds that we use because it's part of the road system. So I don't think we're taking it out of general fund, but I think Brian would be the good clarification for that. He may be watching.
It says here that the county road fund will pay the county's portion.
Yeah, so it comes back through gas taxes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But doesn't mean that Yamhill doesn't have a road fund.
You see, there's a theme here.
Polk County has a road fund that can contribute.
Commissioner Bershauer, are you listening?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We had some discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. We pass that. Gentlemen, thank you for your service and what you do to serve the citizens of Marion County. And I know lately I've been driving a little bit more and some of the other counties do not, or even the cities, do not have roads like ours. You know, you get out in a rural area and our roads are in pretty darn good shape.
Yeah, that's true.
And I was up in Portland last weekend, driving around in northwest, not downtown. And man, their roads are, ugh, it's not good. So thank you. Well, legal counsel was up there. She could probably say the same thing, but...
No comment.
No comment. So thank you for prioritizing. And I know we haven't had all the funds that we've always needed and, but our department over there does really good work in keeping us from getting potholes, et cetera. So thanks for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I want to echo that because I do think there's a lot of things that we do in the county that are sort of boring and taken for granted. And, but we do them well. And I think it's really important that we keep doing those things well that are taken for granted by people. Because like Commissioner says, you go to places where they don't always do the boring things well and it hurts their people.
Well, that's good. And so, you know, tomorrow for our department head elected officials meeting, we're going to go around and talk about, have each department talk about what they accomplished in the middle of COVID and fires. If you look at the roads that got paved and chipped and all that stuff, all that work still got done. And we're going to give department heads a chance tomorrow to just share some of the goals they set before last year started and how with all the work we've been doing collectively to help people through COVID and, you know, the fires and the recovery and you think all these departments still did all that work inside that. So you should feel proud of you and your teams over there at public work. So we're thankful for you. Appreciate it.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends our business for the day. Any, oh, I guess, we gotta read, I always forget reading the calendar and it's kind of a long one. But Commissioner, you want to read it?
I would love to read it. And then I do have a couple of things that I'd like to chat about afterwards. Okay, so for the next week, from this Wednesday to next Wednesday, March 3rd to March 10th, currently, we are at our board session at 555 Court Street in Salem on the first floor. Then at 11 o'clock today, we have our Board of Commissioners' policy meeting upstairs on the fifth floor of this building. Then at 12 o'clock, we have our Woodburn Marion County meeting, which is virtual. At 2 o'clock, we have a wildfire recovery updates with Lynn County Commissioners in our Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor, 555 Court Street. And then today at 4 o'clock, we have our FEMA briefing for local officials, which is virtual. Tomorrow, Thursday, March 4th, we have our department head elected officials meeting in Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor. Tomorrow at 1 o'clock, we have our Health and Human Services Policy Group meeting in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor. And then at 1:30, we have a work session on intellectual and developmental disabilities upstairs on the fifth floor in the Commissioners' Boardroom. And on Friday, the 5th, from 11 to 12, we have the Association of Oregon Counties Weekly COVID-19 Conference Call, which is virtual. And then on Monday, March 8th, we have our calendar review at 9:30 in the Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor. And then at 12:30 on Monday, the 8th, we have the Association of Oregon Counties Legislative Committee, which is virtual. At 2 o'clock on Monday, the 8th, we have our Association of Oregon Counties Board of Directors meeting, which is virtual. On Tuesday, the 9th, at 9:30, we have management update in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor, 555 Court Street. And then on Tuesday, the 9th, at 1:30, we have a work session on the Oregon Port of Willamette Intermodal Rail Yard, Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor, 555 Court Street. And then at 2 o'clock on Tuesday, the 9th, Health and Human Services Policy Group meeting, Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor. And then on Wednesday, we're back here at 9:00 a.m. for the board session, Senate Hearing Room, this room, first floor, 555 Court Street. At 11 o'clock on Wednesday, the 10th, we have a Board of Commissioners' policy meeting, Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor. And then at 4 o'clock on Wednesday, the 10th, we have a FEMA briefing for local officials, which is virtual.
You know, you, you do that so well.
I always wanted to be a newscaster.
She's a, she's a fast...
She's doing it so well and this works out such a good system, we might just have to have...
Fine. I'm not afraid of this.
As I have a plaque upstairs that Janet and Sam gave me, I was the designated, what am I? Sam, if you were watching, I'm the designated Commissioner dog, permanent.
Yeah.
Because I got in that dog suit.
I don't know what you're implying here, but I'm happy to read the calendar.
I mean, you did such a good job and I was just sitting here and this flow works really good.
You know, I did it and it didn't hurt, it didn't hurt me any.
Well, I have to say that I do it pretty well. It's clear, concise and quick.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if I'm going to be proud of myself today, it's going to be for that.
It's true.
My friend, Obie, over, he's, you know, like the assistant clerk over at the house, the state house. And when I first got there, there's actually an article written in the Oregonian about him. And he was showing it to me last week, the speed reader. I mean, he would read so fast, just, you know, bills by tile only. And it was like, rrrr, whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, I could never...
Like an auctioneer.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah. I remember the Oregonian did an article about it.
So while we're doing this, I just, I, last night, I decided to pop in to... So while we're doing this, I just, I, last night, I decided to pop into the City of Detroit Special Council Meeting-
I watched part of it.
And hijack some of their time, because I felt like there was a few things that really needed to be put out there from us, i.e. me, because I was standing there. And I just wanted to briefly talk about two of those particular things here-
That you said?
Uh-huh, with both of you.
I wasn't watching so good, I loved it.
Yeah, so I talked about six things, actually, but the two things that I think are the most important to reiterate today is, one, recreation up the North Fork is not open. You shouldn't ride your bike up there on the road, you shouldn't drive up there and encroach on county land, or state land, or federal land, or private land to get in the river with a kayak. I spoke to a resident yesterday who, aside from the fact that these folks are severely traumatized from their homes burning to the ground, and a process being considerably delayed for them to be able to recover, they're now being threatened by particular folks who recreate up there. And this, this landowner, on Sunday, was berated by a group of kayakers who were on the North Fork River, because he hasn't yet gotten the hazardous trees that are on his land and in the water out of their way. And an officer from the Marine Board was present to observe it and tried to engage. And I'm offended for those landowners and for our citizens up there. And I, I've asked Jan to reach out to Public Works and to do more than what we've currently done for signage, to note that recreation up there of all kinds is not open. It's obvious when you drive up there that you shouldn't be up there. I also understand on Saturday, there was a bicycle group that decided to go for a bike ride up there, and there are numerous log trucks moving through there with piles of logs, and it's very dangerous. So I would really like to just express how necessary it is to be respectful and not go up the North Fork. Until the signs that have the giant orange sticker over it that says "closed" are removed, people shouldn't be up there. And I think that we're gonna be doing more as commissioners in the next two hours about this topic, because I really want to protect the safety of everyone, but also the landowners. And then the second thing is, is there's a lot of construction going on up the canyon because of the recovery. And I heard some concerning information yesterday, that there are potential contractors giving information to landowners that's not the best information around septic tanks. I did speak to city staff in Detroit yesterday to confirm that this was valid, and a landowner came into the city of Detroit this week to start the process on their land, which is awesome, and they were inquiring about why the county is making it so difficult for septic tanks to be started and/or reconnected, and that they were provided advice that, you don't need to do that, you don't need to go through the county process and get a septic tank. In fact, you should just dig a hole and put a holding tank in, and then cover it with dirt and a shed. And I thought, well, that's interesting advice, and so I called Brandon at Public Works to say, I know nothing about septic tanks and holding tanks, but tell me the difference. And he sent me a very, very helpful email. And so I went to the city council meeting last night to ask them for help on communication of the challenges that could come for folks that just decide to dig a hole and put a tank in it, and then call it a holding tank. Aside from the fact that the county has processes that I believe are working well when people reach out to interact with them, the DEQ are the ones that are gonna swoop in if a holding tank is installed without proper procedure and cause a fair amount of havoc and consequences, which could be costly and burdensome, and in fact, delay the rebuild process overall. So for those that are watching that are rebuilding in Detroit, or Gates, or the North Fork, if you have questions, please call Public Works and talk to our planning team. I believe that they are jumping through every hurdle, or over every hurdle, to make sure folks are being served, and/or reach out to us, and we'll help you. But not every contractor is maybe giving you the best advice, and you should always do your own due diligence to make sure that you're making the best decision for yourself. So, that's it.
Did you, did you receive any feedback from the council?
Well, they were, it was, I mean, I really just gave me some time, it wasn't like a conversation, because it was a special meeting, but I did speak to each person in person afterwards that was present, and they, two of them were aware of the specific situation that I was addressing about the septic tank, holding tank. I mean, then I spoke to the mayor about it a bit, and I also provided them the information from Brandon in writing, and have asked them to do kind of a PSA announcement through their channels, to make sure that the landowners understand the processes. You know, we want to be helpful.
Right, and all of us that are, were in the impacted, because I have received my letter this week, in fact, I showed it to you, and you're sitting in me, we just, you know, all the citizens received a letter, and there's information there they can contact us with, too.
Right.
And that was about the suspension of the building permits, et cetera. And I didn't, I was thinking, I didn't declare a conflict, because I haven't had to apply for any building permits, but I didn't think about that when we did that board order.
Is that a conflict, though? Is all people similarly situated?
Well, I wouldn't declare a potential conflict of interest, but since I didn't have any permits, I didn't even think about that. Although I did just apply for a permit to install propane, so.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Well, that's good, thank you for doing that last night, and we have a Detroit Planning Commission meeting tonight to address the, it's not us, it's not coming to us, it's on the Detroit City Council, to do a conditional use for their new city hall-
Yeah.
-community center, so that's wonderful, good. Hopefully, we'll make the right recommendation, send it on to the city council to approve quickly.
I really appreciate the work that's being done between the county and the cities. There's, yesterday, we got another request, and we, I made a call over to the state, and people are just really responsive to the things that come in. I think people have various questions, they send them in, and we try to attend to it right away, in all cases, of course, but we've had a lot of correspondence come in since I've been here for, you know, things up the canyon, and I, I mean, I like to help people, so I find it really excellent that I get the chance to do that.
Yeah. Anything you want to share?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Busy week, still working, it's great to see our restaurants again.
Oh, it's fabulous, yeah, really good.
I actually went yesterday for lunch, it was the first time I actually sat in a restaurant in a long time in Oregon.
Yeah.
So that was good. After a great lunch, I was served by our chief legal counsel over there, presented some service awards, and I just want to recognize Sandy, 25 years in legal, in the office there, and Scott was 20 years. And they both must have started when they were 18, because, unlike commissioners, they haven't aged. All right, anything else?
No, that's it.
Jane, anything you want to make a comment about your superstars over there?
They really appreciated you coming over, so thank you.
It's good, it's always good to be out there with, the people are making it happen. So we will adjourn.